All right. All right, we'll call this meeting to order at six o'clockish. Six oh one, there we go.
This is good.
We can, would like to appoint Bill O'Neill as our alternate, step in. Everybody's all good with that, the agenda, any changes on the agenda?
So there's just one change to the agenda tonight, and that includes case P 2203 for Norway Plains Agent for Keith Dubey of Piper Dubey LLC. They submitted an email to continue their application to the March 15th meeting.
We won't be looking at that today.
So you'll just be hearing P 2202 and 04.
And 04, okay.
Have motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
As amended.
As amended, so moved.
Do you have a second?
I'll second it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we'll start off with case P 2202, Jones and Beach Agent for Dave Fuller, Route 28 Boat Storage LLC. Let's first is have a waiver request. The waiver request is for section 4.02 F 37, the requirement of a landscaping plan. Buildings are set. Building itself, the storage building is set way back, so. Pretty good natural buffer there.
I think I have a problem.
With the waiver?
No, both cases are listed as 2202.
Oh, the top of the planner review?
On the planner review.
Yeah.
Sorry about that. Thought I'd let you know.
All right, well, we're doing the 2202 that's that is over on Sun Cook Valley Road. How about that?
Yep.
All right, so any issues with that waiver and comments from board or?
So what this says is that what they're going to develop is all shaded, all shielded by woods. As it is, so they don't feel like they need to have anything more than that.
It's pretty well back in there, isn't it? How far?
It's next to Emerson Way, right? Goes in, goes way in the back.
250 feet.
Yeah.
I don't really have a problem with that in this particular case because it's set back so far. Further back, things are said as great, better as far as.
So the only question that I had was Brad, your responses to the questions. Couple of references here to that landscaping had been landscaping has been added for a buffer between non-residential residential uses. Tractive streetscape adjacent to the roadways, screening vehicular headlights. So there is a lot of references to landscaping in your answers that has been added to this.
Yeah, so once again, Brad Jones with Jones Beach and here with Dave Fuller. Yeah, on C2, we do have some landscaping that we have provided and that's shown is some trees around the parking lot. That's probably the thinnest area of woods, but like, like the waiver states, the it's, the whole site is surrounded by big stand of hardwood and pine trees and so, so we felt that, you know, the landscaping was a little less important in the type of site. This is not a type of site where you're going to have, you know, customers coming in and a lot of people coming into the site and it's well, well into the property too, so. But I think that's what the reference was as far, and we are, we are doing some landscaping, so.
Yeah.
But out near the road, near 28, is basically the way you see it today.
Yes, because the road, the road is actually in, so, and the wetland crossing is completed up to a point. So, so the road that you see and that wooded, there's a wetland as you drive in on the right. So all that's going to remain.
But as you go down 28 today, it isn't going to look much different than it is right now.
No, because you're going to go in.
I think, I think like the entrance, as far as like the immediate entrance is right off of the pavement. You know, we're going to have some grass strips and stuff on the disturbed areas, but not a landscape plan with all kinds of shrubs.
If a car driving by at 30 miles an hour, what are they going to see?
Okay.
You know, I mean, it's, it's far enough set back so that that should not be a thorn in somebody's eyesight. So this is Johnny's lot. So if you're on 28, you've got Johnny's lot and then you're behind you, right?
Yeah, he actually owns both of them.
Yeah.
Those or did?
He does, he, well, he, well, he, he owns the one in the front, but you.
I mean, because there's no trees there, but there is trees there.
Yeah.
So, I mean.
But this is behind it. No.
Yeah, so I think the waiver makes, request for waiver makes.
In the middle of the woods.
I mean, there is a 24 square foot sign proposed right there, obviously, for
Yeah.
obvious reasons.
And should I make a motion that we approve the waiver for section 4.02 F 37 landscaping plan? Because of the distance back from the road, it will not interfere with the line of sight.
We have a motion?
It's a motion, I'll second it.
Seconded by Russ, any further discussion from the board? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right. Now completeness of the application?
Jessica.
And yeah, Jessica, you know, based on your number of whys next to all of their required submittals.
So now that there was, there was just a few things under the section on plan review. I'm sure that you had taken a look at that, Brad.
Yes, I have, yep.
And just added those few things on there. And like I had noted, it was checked off that it was a location of stump dumps. So this
There will be no, no stump dump.
Was on the checklist.
Yeah, it's actually going to, they're going to grind all the stumps.
So that's not something that was already there. This is, okay.
No.
Just clarifying that, that's all.
We have a motion for completeness?
I'll make a motion, do we accept this application as complete?
I'll second that.
Okay, kind of a tie on seconds, we'll give Roger the. Okay, any other comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Great.
You want to, you want to run us through one more time?
Yeah, so the plan that you're looking at tonight is, it's got the same buildings, same locations. So we have two boat storage buildings planned for the property, and then it's going to be a small office out front. And, and it's going to be a paved entrance up about 50 feet in, and then it's going to go to gravel. And the rest of the parking lot will be gravel. And, and this is going to be really just for boat storage. So you're going to see activity in the spring and activity in the fall. Where the boats get transported, they'll all be maintained prior to be getting to the site. And they'll be put in and with forklifts into the building and then taken back out in the spring. So it's kind of an operation that's really just going to happen kind of seasonal when the boats come in and out. The plans themselves, once again, they really haven't changed. We did address some of the items. We do have a 30,000 gallon sister and shown on the plans. We did add a generator to that, and that system will actually feed both buildings. And there'll be a sprinkler system in both buildings, and this helps with insurance and it's, it's the right thing to do with a large building like that. So, so that system will be set up with the generator, so that should, that'll be a dependable fire suppression system for that building. The office itself is just 20 by 20. It's more a small building for, it will have, we have designed a leach field for that. And they'll hook to the well, but it's going to have very little use and and once again, there's really not public that's going to come to the site. It's not like somebody had a boat and they wanted to have it stored. This would not be the place to go. This would be run by a boat marina that has several boats and kind of does this. But it's not going to be everybody bringing boats in and bringing boats out and by themselves, so. We did look over the comments, and I think one of the items was the hours of operation. Did want to go over that. The town itself allows 6:30 to 9:00 for the construction of the site. We don't think that we need hours, you know, that, that long. Normal construction hours are really seven to seven is what we'd like to do. I think most of the time, construction sites run from seven to five. But if, you know, sometimes you get into a project and you want to work actually, so, so we'd like to state the hours of operation for the construction of the site from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And that would be Monday through Saturday. And then the business itself would like to have hours the same, seven to seven. Once again, very little use, you're going to have just kind of trucks coming in, setting boats and that'll just give them a little bit of flexibility. We did agree to, because of the school proximity and being out on Route 28, we have agreed to not haul any boats until 8:45. And the best I can tell, I looked at the bus schedules. That would make sure that all the buses have delivered the kids to school by 8:45, and then that's when the boats would work during school hours. And then at 2:30, they would not haul any boats until 3 o'clock, and that's when the buses leave the high school and, and exit. And that, so for that half hour, they would make sure there's no traffic. And that's just something I know it was brought up at the ZBA meeting and and the owner felt that that wasn't an issue on his part. And so, so we did agree to that. We can put this note on the plan, which is not on the plan at this point. But that, that kind of goes through, through the hours of operation and, and, you know, and the bus schedule, so. And I don't remember if we, did we talk about the bus schedule before? I thought we did, but I think there was some
Yeah. Discussion about it.
Then there were a couple of other small comments, the well radius, we will absolutely put that on the plan. And hours of operation, and then we talked about the stump dump, the drainage analysis. We have had that reviewed by Titan Vaughn, and that's been approved, so. Next step is to get that issued to AOT, Alteration Train State, and we will get that permit completed, and DOT has already signed off on the change of use for the DOT permit. So we do have that in hand and approved with, with the site plan that you, you see tonight, so. So, I mean, that's kind of the highlights. I did notice one thing on the comments for the town that as far as like a condition of approval, they talked about having a DES septic approval, and I wanted to know if that could be not part of the condition, only that if, if for some reason the office didn't get built immediately, and we didn't have that septic design in place, it wouldn't affect the approvals, we'd still go back and submit absolutely a DES plan, submit that back to the town. I just didn't want that to be contingent on approvals. And maybe I misread that, but that, that was just something.
Yeah, I think for the, for the office, you, you're going to have to have something
Absolutely.
In there, and, and your thought is that you may not build the office right away?
If it didn't, is that?
Yeah, it's not going to be an office, but we're going to have somebody sitting in there. It's probably going to be more for, it's going to be like for file cabinets, files left in there for people, you know, that have their boats, maybe some keys, things like that. It's, it's not going to be, we're not going to sit somebody in an office from seven to 3:30. It's just going to kind of more like be a storage location. If there was guys, you know, working there, they needed to, you know, that were in there putting boats in and they it was, you know, they wanted to have a car, whatever, get in out of the rain. But it's not really going to be an operating.
Or go to the bathroom.
And we will design, I mean, we are going to design that beach field on that side of the building, so it's not, it's just a timing part of it, that's all. I just didn't.
More interested in getting the, the storage building built first.
Yeah, at least it could be under construction and then absolutely the intention is to to design that with, you know, we still do have to do a test pit on that location, we, we may want to move it to that side of the building where it's shown now, so.
So you could, you could take that condition out of conditions precedent and you could move it down to subsequent conditions if you wanted to, or just take it off altogether, because he's going to need to provide that information, so the building department anyways at some point.
The one thing that I did not see was anything that specifically said that no maintenance was going to be done on site. And I'm pretty sure we had talked about that, which there isn't, right? But I don't see anything that specifically is excluding that.
We could add, add a note. I think you're right, I don't see a a note on the plan, but absolutely don't have a problem with that.
I remember we had a quite a, talking about other boat storage places that wanted to do service and it required special drains and things like that. I don't think you want to get into that now.
Yeah, it opens up a whole
Yeah. Chettle of fish.
Mr. Chairman, can we just go back to the condition of septic approval? If we want to move that or take it off entirely?
Yeah, I, I think I'd feel better about moving that under to subsequent.
Yeah, makes sense.
Yeah, we're fine with that, yeah.
And we are going to require the site plan be recorded, is that correct, or?
Um, yeah, so let's address that. So Brad, you had mentioned that you didn't mind recording the maintenance manual.
Yep, we can do that, yep.
So I wanted to bring that up with the board. We actually have a few made the final major site plans coming up. And I'd like the board to be consistent as to how they manage these maintenance manuals, you know, with these cases and moving forward.
Yep.
So my proposal to the board is instead of recording the maintenance manual is to make sure you add a note to sheet C2, which is a site plan, that a maintenance manual exists.
He has in his note 15.
It is already on there?
Yeah.
Okay. Instead of recording the separate manual, and then it would just be one sheet.
So that all gets recorded at once?
It would, yeah, it would just be just this one sheet instead of the entire manual.
So this one sheet would reference
The manual.
And require, as it states here, that "All owners and operators present in future shall follow the approved manual and complete all inspections and reporting requirements." So it binds all future owners to that manual.
As long as it's clear in the documents when somebody's buying this thing, when it's sold. That's the only, doesn't get lost in the dust someplace, you know?
Yeah. Yeah, so I mean, how does the board kind of feel? I mean, because we are going to going to have to be following through with this same requirement in the future as well. So the maintenance manual is, is in our package here. Not an extensive document.
I mean, it needs to be there so somebody can find it. I mean, on a subdivision, I don't think you want to have it just recorded on the plat. You need it on the deeds, but in a case like this where it's one item, I think it's just, it's fine. As long as it's recorded on the, on the, on the plat.
Maybe reference that it can be found in the planning department's files or something like that?
Yeah, I could add that to, to the note we have. Makes sense, yep.
So is there, if the property should be sold and you've got a new owner who didn't go through all of this? Should we make a requirement that, that they actually be informed that these requirements are there somehow? You know, in other words, how does that?
So it can't be overlooked?
Yeah, so it doesn't, doesn't get lost, because a lot of these things are great when the, when you do the first you know, with the person who's developing the project.
No.
And then it changes hands and it gets lost.
Well, we will refer back to the recorded plans in the deed. And so at the same time, it could, you know, but it, but then the, the, that would prompt you to.
Yeah, the, the problem becomes, you know, as, as Russ is saying, this actual document, you know, where is it? You know, and so it makes a reference here and then where, where is that document?
I guess the easier way to look at it, 50 years from now.
Yep.
When we're all gone.
Sure.
What happens? That somebody else, it's in somebody else's hands, and if they haven't come in for a change of use, are they going to know? That's, I guess that's the question that Russell is asking.
I think the thing that's the most enduring is the deed.
Right.
And it, and if it's attached to that somehow. I think, because otherwise, you know, the town has to chase all these things down.
Right.
That's not going to happen.
Can it be added to the deed?
I don't think, I think it would, it would have to be referred to in the deed under a book and page and then and then, and we have recorded them in the past.
Yeah.
So it's not like it's real uncommon. I mean, it, it's not a big deal to record it and then reference the recording number on the, on the plans. But like you say, though, that'll be the way the town will proceed for, for the, for the rest of the sites, right? So.
It should, it should be effective for whatever we do. I mean, it can't just be hope that it happens, you know? I mean, this may not be the most difficult one, but there's others, you know? So I'm just thinking of a way that that at least could be known about in the future and also enforceable.
Yeah, the yeah, because not everybody's going to read every note on the site plans. And we'll, we'll retain a copy of this here in the planning department, correct? So so, yeah, so we can, we can either request that this, we can't require that this be recorded. It's not in our regulations.
It's not.
We can, we can request it. But as a possible solution, if we reference it in the plan and say that it is kept on file at the planning board, we can require that this plan be recorded.
Right.
So so from a operational point of view for us, for the upcoming cases that we're going to be having, we can enforce easily by saying, put it on the plan and, and reference it on the plan and then record the plan. Unless we, because site plan regulation is going to be next on our agenda in the coming year to review that, but but for now, requiring that keeps us all within our authority. May not be the best solution right now.
Yeah.
But and I appreciate your willingness to, to, to record this, but I'm also thinking that the, the next
Yep.
case, there may be some refusal on that.
Pushback, yeah.
So.
Now, this, this maintenance manual, is this something new?
Oh, these have been around forever.
Yeah.
So, so everybody that does a site plan has to bring somebody once a year, inspect ditches and.
They should.
I've never heard of it before.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, if, if that is, if that's something that's part of their approval process to have a maintenance plan, then yes, they should. So.
The problem is enforcing those things.
The problem is enforcing it, and, you know, and I lived in a development that was 40 years old that had a storm water management plant.
It doesn't do any good to have catchment basins that are never cleaned. Maintenance is different.
Yeah, the main, yeah, the management and maintenance, yeah.
They're two different things.
Yeah, where we had to go through and clean out catch basins and, you know, check ponds and, yeah.
And remember, the AOT is going to also require us, you know, and they, they may fortify that document as well, based on, you know, we run through that permit. You know, if something gets added to the drainage or and, and in the future, if anybody ever decided to do porous pavement, whatever, that, you know, you, you would add, that document would get expanded. But definitely AOT, that by the time we're done, we may add a line or two in there for, you know, based on their comments, so. And, and I don't think that doesn't get recorded on their end, but it's another record that that file would be at the state as well, so.
So my, I mean, my, my feeling is, is if you can add on your note 15 on C2, just that the, that this operation maintenance manual is on file at the Alton Planning Department.
Sure.
And I think that, and then record C2, I think, then we're in good shape. Three?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Does board have any, anything else?
I have a couple more things.
Okay.
So under your final major site plan rigs, it talks about observation, construction observations. Know if you want to require an engineer to do any services attached to this project or not.
I think it would be a good idea, considering conservation's concerns. Certainly for the stormwater at least. To the rest of the board?
Yeah, this backs up to Pop and Brook Drainage right there. Pretty important.
Oh, no.
And the, there's quite a bit of grading that has to be done there, there's a lot of slope involved. It's, when we talked about it on conservation, I think that was certain, so it's probably make sure it gets built right, you know?
Yeah, and stabilization of those slopes, because they are significant. So any other comments from board on that regarding the construction observations? Any other comments from board on that regarding the construction observations? So I think, you know, you've highlighted five primary items on your, your list here, and I think that if we added the slope stabilization and drainage construction.
And then requests from the fire department for the sizes of the hose that we're talking about.
Yes.
All right, so I'm gonna keep conditions precedent at number ten in place.
Okay.
With the, does the board then want a reconstruction meeting to be held? That way, we can all be on the same page and everyone knows what, what to inspect and.
Yep.
Okay.
I think that just makes things so crystal clear.
It does. The comments from the fire department?
Yes, we've read through those, absolutely. We'll make, we'll actually put those notes on a fire system and design plan and take care of that. Yep, no problems with that.
All right.
You've got the note as well about the maintenance.
Okay, so can you just clarify that about what was that for maintenance?
So that, that there was gonna be no boat repair or maintenance?
Yep. Should that be down under subsequent conditions? Or is that a note added to the plan?
Added to the plan.
Okay. All right. Just these two, and then I'm all set.
You gotta go. Public input too, right?
Yeah. Did you want to do that first?
Yeah.
Okay, so you can do public first, then we can do that after.
Yeah.
Okay.
So is there anybody, the board have anything else on this? So anyone from the public here for this case? No one's jumping up? All right, so let's talk about active and substantial development parameters. I'm gonna, I'm gonna read off of yours, so I don't have to dig it out of mine.
Okay.
So within twenty-four months after date of approval, following items must be completed in order to constitute active and substantial development or building. So you're, you're planning on jumping into this, I imagine, this year after going through all this fun? So the, it's up to the board, I mean, is, we, it's listed as twenty-four months, we can make this twelve months, we can.
Twenty-four months will give them the chance to get the building and then maybe the, the office and all done. I don't see anything wrong with allowing twenty-four months.
Yeah. So the specifics.
Goes by quickly.
Yeah.
And you never know when COVID's gonna hit.
Yeah.
Again.
So we need to list specific items, and that would be, I imagine, the clearing and grubbing and the site work.
I think all the erosion control stuff should be done. That's before the, you know, that, all that stuff has to be done.
That has to be done before they can.
But once that's in, that's, that's a big commitment to get that, I think.
Right, you want that first, erosion control?
Yeah, and all of sedimentation ponds and everything. Then, then, then as far as the building goes, that's gonna be on them as far as when they want to get revenue. I don't want the building built first, and then the other stuff happens.
And, and then put the silt fence up?
Right.
Can we, we'd like, we'd like to, if, to be able to do the tree clearing, then put the silt fence up. Otherwise, they cut the trees and then they knock it all down and.
Well, that would be, yeah, that, that's a logical sequence anyway.
Okay.
But as far as, you know, you're actually doing soil work and.
Yeah, oh, yeah. Stripping and, yeah.
Moving, you know, you could do your, your grubbing and clearing, and then you get your, all the erosion control in.
Yep.
That's good. And then you can, whatever it takes to get your building done, that's after.
Do you want to come up with a second threshold? Or you can always do the same thing for both thresholds, if you want.
Yeah, the second threshold is, is substantial completion, right, of the improvements?
Correct.
So I'm, that, that's gonna be basically ready, you know, ready for occupancy, you know?
Obtaining a building permit or? CO?
CL.
CL, yeah. Okay. Board have anything else? Anybody want to make a motion?
As long as you give us some help.
Steel.
I'll make a motion that we approve case P twenty-two oh two. With certain changes, we have to add to the plan. No boat repair and maintenance. Adding that the maintenance will, schedule will be on file in the office onto the C two. What else did we change?
Record the site plan.
Oh, record the site in minor detail. I think that's it, well.
Addressing comments from the fire department.
Yeah, addressing the comments in the fire department and the conservation commission, the erosion control. And.
Conditions precedent, subsequent precedent.
Yeah, as, as, as described just recently.
Yes, exactly, as described.
I'm sure Trish can clean that up and make that sound like a hell of a.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Hi.
Aye. No opposed. Good, all right.
Great.
All right.
Thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
Question, is the public hearing, I know you said something was canceled tonight. Is the public hearing on the twenty-four canceled tonight, or is that still going on?
Twenty-two oh four?
Twenty-two oh four, yeah.
Uh, where, where that's the case we're gonna be getting into next and.
Okay, I just know I missed a little something.
Yeah, you're welcome. All right, so the next case, P twenty-two oh four. This is Four Way Plains, agent for Jeffrey Hotel and Van Hotel, senior owners. Map fifteen lot nine three Hodgson Road, final major site plan residential rural zone. Storage facility, two storage buildings. I recall. Request. So the board will be looking for completeness. Jessica, you didn't find anything missing out of here?
I did not.
In no way.
No waivers.
Motion to accept the application is complete.
All right, Russ?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Want to walk us through?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board, Scott Law from Four Way Plains. Here with me tonight is Jeffrey Hotel, co-owners of the project. We've been to this board a couple times. Mister, the hotels are proposing two self-storage buildings to be constructed off, at the corner of Hodgson Road, Mitchy, Merrimichie Hill Road and Route twenty-eight. We've gone through extensive stormwater management design and site design. We've obtained the NHDOT driveway permit. This permit is actually issued to the town of Alton for the upgrade of Hodgson Road for the first two hundred and fifty feet, which will serve as the access to this project. The rest of the site plans haven't changed since we were presented it to the design review. With the exception of some minor additions per the comments of this board. More specifically, modified the lighting analysis to include putting the wall-mounted lights at the right elevations, and we added a additional pole-mounted light on the utility pole on, on the hotel's property that'll illuminate the intersection of their driveway onto Hodgson Road. We've ensured that the lights meet the three thousand K for the color intensity that the board brought up. We also added some additional plants along the berm of the stormwater pond, which is really the only area that would be visible from twenty-eight. Currently, there's a, a fairly substantial vegetated buffer between twenty-eight and the development. So we've got, but we did add some additional trees as the board suggested we, we do. And that's essentially the changes that we made to the site plan since we came in front of the board, the design review. We added a few notes for the, the staff planners' comments about hours of operations, percent and perifreeze coverage is percent landscaping coverage, is things like that. But I, I see in the planner's review for tonight, there's a couple more notes that we'll be adding as, as he's a present or subsequent conditions of the approval. With that, I've, I'd be glad to answer any questions the board has on regards to site plan. That's the, the gist of where we've been for the last, you know, since we came in front of the board for design review. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make the same suggestion and change conditions precedent number five to have the site plan recorded instead of the maintenance manual. Then add a note to the plan referencing that.
I just have one question for the planner. I know in other counties, Stratford County being an example, they do not allow you to record a site plan. I assume Beldop County does allow, I don't know, this to be.
As far as I know, I, I haven't actually had to record a site plan since I started working here.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't know if we've.
Okay. I, I just know, I know Stratford County is an example, does not, Rockingham County does, so each county does.
That's interesting.
Choose to, so just food for thought. I mean, we don't have a problem recording the site plan, sheet C one. But I just want to bring that to the attention.
Okay.
It's up to, subject to the approval, the registry of deeds.
At some point, they did.
Yes.
So I'm, I'm hoping.
As I know, we always did.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, it was, it was, if I can speak frankly, in Stratford County, some towns weren't just requiring one sheet, they're requiring all fifteen sheets, twenty sheets, and, and the registry at, at some points has said, okay, enough, and they stopped allowing the recording of site plans at the, in Stratford County.
Our attorney has, says that you do two things at the same time, site plan and subdivision. So that's the way we go.
Again, I've, we, we.
Simultaneous.
Yeah, we have no objections to it, I'm just.
Okay, thanks for that input, yeah.
I guess I have one question, which I see the extra planting. As you drive by today, is anything else gonna be cut? Because I, I just hopeful that it state's definition of a greenway is trying to keep things, and especially the questionnaire that the town just went through. They want to have improvements, but they don't want to see them. People will know where everything is, they'll be able to find you, without a question.
Yeah.
But it just, if it's, if it's right on the road, it just opens things up and we're it's, it's not the same optically.
No, the, the limit of clearing that is currently exists out there is the extent of the clearing.
I just wanted to be upfront.
Yeah, these buildings are, the slab of these buildings are what, like twenty feet above the road, give or take?
So they'll, they'll be up into the elevation of basically the canopy of the mature trees that are being re- retained.
Okay. I'm having a hard time reading my mini drawing here.
Do you want to look at this one?
Twenty.
What are you looking at? Which sheet?
It's, uh. C three.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman, the, the lower slab elevation is eight seventy-one and a half, and if you draw a line perpendicular to Route twenty-eight, the existing grade out there is eight fifty-seven, eight fifty-six, eight fifty-seven, so. Right, so about fifteen, fifteen feet or so.
For this fifteen feet, the height of this building is how high?
Fifteen, oh, height is fifteen, I saw.
The, the eaves are fourteen feet at, or at the eaves, and then they go up.
The width is forty-five. One's, one's forty-five, one's thirty-six.
Highest point is the closest roof to twenty-eight is about thirty feet.
Correct.
Higher than Route twenty-eight. Which sheet were the plantings identified on?
Their sheet L two, Mr. Chairman.
The second one in the back.
Which sheet has your lighting plan on? It should be L one, which is third from the back.
Third from the back?
Yes, sir.
So all these lights are on the between the buildings, basically.
With the exception of the one pole mounted light.
Yeah, on the intersection.
So the only openings on these buildings will be in the central between the two?
Correct.
But the the drive continues on and the intent is maybe in the future you have some more buildings. One of the things that I was looking at in this is the the road is a classics road that the town is owned, and so they'll be building their entrance way. And as long as that road gets built so that potentially gets extended through sometime, there should be a town standard. I think that I don't know if we've if we've captured that right or.
Yeah, that's already been.
Yeah, that's been addressed.
Yeah, but just to reemphasize that, that's got to be done that way. So if we do that, then we want to have the town engineer inspected.
Absolutely.
As it's being built and stuff.
Which actually, if I can note something further on your comment. Jeff, I had sent you an email with that estimate.
Yep.
If you can just respond back to that.
Yep.
So I can get that going.
Yeah.
Because that needs to be in place before a.
Right, I wasn't going to sign anything until I had approval for the.
Oh, okay.
For the business.
All right.
But yes, no problem.
Okay.
Yeah, it's going to be important that we emphasize that that's that is a piece of town property.
Absolutely.
And it's going to be done right.
Yep. That's already in the works.
Board have anymore?
The other thing is there's a spillway on the drainage plan that goes out and it basically will take water from the site and put it on as a state property. Go into the and and that kind of splits and goes both ways, right? And do we have sure that state's okay with that, the way that?
Yes, as part of the DOT driveway permit application that was for the town. The full drainer's report was submitted to the town or to, excuse me, to District Three. They reviewed it and had no problems while they asked, they had some minor comments in regards to it, we made those adjustments and.
Okay, so they're they've seen it. That's kind of the only things that I've had, so. We haven't seen this how many times?
Yeah, I know. You know, to open it up and flip a couple pages, like, oh, yeah, I remember this. Anything else from the board? And we'll open this up for public comment, so. Yeah, come on up if you can grab a chair and just announce your name.
Kathy Fairman, and I own the property at forty one Marimichi Hill Road, which is directly across the street or almost across the street, sort of diagonally across the street, but I'm on the sort of the corner of Marimichi Hill Road north on the north side, the opposite side of the road from the from the proposal. And these are my questions. The geography falls off very significantly, so their property comes along here and Route twenty eight and then it goes down like that onto the property down below on the other side of Marimichi Hill Road. This is between Marimichi Hill Road and Bowman Road. When the road was put in in nine, when twenty eight was put in in nineteen fifty seven, there were two, at least two, and there might be three, but I know there's two significant culverts that run underneath Route twenty eight, spilling water from the side of the road, the the south side of the road where this project is down onto the property below. So the two properties below between Bowman Road and Marimichi Hill Road, including mine. And there's a lot of water there, so it's it's underwater, it's in the aquifer or whatever, and there's a lot of water and it flows down through the property all the way down to the lake. So what I'm concerned about is where the the spill wa- the stormwater project is, is going to be like holding water that's going into that. And I just heard that it's going to be draining onto state property. And I'm wondering what the state property is that's draining onto and how, where it's going to go. It's going to go downhill and it's going to run downhill onto my property and onto the slave property, which is my family as well. So I'm concerned about that and I'm wondering, you know, what's to prevent that from happening? I'm also wondering why the stormwater drain, stormwater property, why that isn't going to be screened from twenty eight as well? I heard that that's going to be visible and I don't understand why that shouldn't be screened too. And my one other question is, are the lights all downlights so that they so they will not be visible from Route twenty eight? Okay, so those are my three areas of concern and mostly about where's that water going to go?
Yeah, so so your your last point is the easiest and that's that's, yes, they're all downlights.
Okay.
I'll tackle the easy one. The 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 first point, I think, is is probably the the most critical of concern and and I I think I'd let Scott explain kind of the concept of of the management of this water, because that's really what this design is doing is is not, instead of flooding out like it made, like we made it sound. It it really is managing the water, slowing it, it's giving it time to percolate into the soil as, you know, pond builds up and you can explain all that stuff much better.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, yes, as the chairman's just indicated. We were required as as part of the town ordinance and regulations to develop a stormwater management system to account for the change in the land use. So when you go from woods to building and pavements, you're going to have a change of land character. No more waterfalls out of the sky than it used to, minus the whole global warming thing, but in theory is no more water comes out of the sky, so what happens to that water? When, obviously, when we've put a building impervious surfaces there, it's not going to allow that water to soak into the ground in those locations. So what we're doing is we're collecting that stormwater and we're just, we're directing it into a treatment system consisting of a sediment for bay, which picks up all the initial first flush of the silts and sands and stuff as it comes off the paved surfaces. And then it flows into a, in this case, a pocket pond, so that pocket pond is designed to have volume in it to account for all that water that comes in at once, because it's getting there much quicker now and releases it at a rate that is equal to or less than the rate that it would normally have come off the wooded surfaces. So we've designed that and that part of our report that we submitted to the town included all those calculations and how it deals with it. At which point on the town sends it out to their consultant, had reviewed it and they had found it was in in keeping with the town regulations. And then, as I pointed out a few minutes ago, we then also submitted it to the Department of Transportation and they've reviewed it and found it in compliance with the state stormwater regulations for managing the stormwater so that it doesn't flood the downstreams. So what we'd look at is different storm events to ensure that we've met those requirements of not creating a detrimental to the downstream watersheds as a result of this proposed development. The water will flow from the hotel's property into the state right away. There are two cross culverts that we picked up. There's a fifteen inch that's pretty close to where the pond is and then further down, right at the corner of Hodgson Road and is a catch basin, there's a couple culverts on a catch basin and that's a an eighteen inch drainage pipe that goes across the street. And what we've done is we've proven through our calculations that the water that gives to those two cat cross culverts won't exceed what currently happens today, which is what we're obligated to achieve.
Okay, so that if there was an increase in it at either one of those locations, then it would come, we'd come back to you to have you resolve that.
Correct.
Requirement, Kathy, is that state says you cannot discharge water faster than it comes onto your property. So the long and short of it is what they've done is they've retained the water and release it slowly. So it's not just.
It's going right in, it's going right into that culvert, though, you're releasing it into that cover.
Yep, it's going with gravity, there's no two ways.
Well, I'm not sure that's true. It looks like it could go either way, because it's right on.
Pond, the pond discharges, the water that leaving the pond is actually flows down towards the towards Hodgson Road drainage and.
Goes to the to the north.
That would actually be south.
Of Bowman Road.
Okay, the smaller, the fifteen inch culvert doesn't really receive the water from the pond, it's just getting water that's coming off.
So it's mostly going south on twenty.
It's all going south on twenty eight, right onto our properties, yeah. No, 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 no. It's going, it's going to the opposite side of twenty eight from you.
Yes.
Right, which is north, yeah, so.
Wait a minute, I'm confused, just looking, I'm looking at the drawing.
It's going under the road and.
And I see the discharge and there's a fifty fifty chance it can go either way.
Right, but it's across the road, her family owns both pieces.
Doesn't matter, because it's got to get through under the road in one of those culverts and the fifteen inch one is to the north. And where this is coming out, it looks like it could go either way.
Is that correct? It could go either way, it's not, you're saying it's all going to go into the eighteen inch.
It's all going to go to the eighteen inches.
So that's to the south.
To the south, that's correct. Okay.
The other one will pick up sheet flow that's coming off the land.
Well, no, it's if he's what he says is correct and it's all going to the south, it's not going to hit the fifteen inch culvert.
There'd be water coming off the hotel land from the woods.
Right, but not from.
Not the detention system, that's correct.
Okay, so that leaves the only other one is the screening of the of the stormwater area. Why isn't that screen, why is that going to be be able to be seen from twenty eight?
So we did, that's where we have planted trees on the berm to help soften that area up. The one area that we didn't plant trees is where the stone riprap is.
Right.
So so but we do, we did, that's where we have shown plantings, some spruce trees to be installed.
Tom's going to share the the.
This is where the buildings are.
Yep.
That's where the pond is and these are where the plantings would be put and this is the road.
Oh, okay, all right.
So it gives you an idea of what this is what they were talking about, this is where the drainage goes this way, this is where the drainage goes that way.
And it's all going to go, that your pipes are going to send it that way rather than this way.
That's correct.
There it is, right there, yeah. Those were the two I know.
The ditch in the road basically is going to carry it that direction, but but I think that part of the theory.
The road's going to do it, okay.
Yeah, but part of the theory is is that the the pond is the pond is taking some of this water and and that's perking out, so it's not, you're not getting all the water off of this impervious surface into the pond and then down out. It the pond holds some of it and and slows the process down and releases some of it. So so it's it's managing it. And we are pretty tough on that and conservation is particularly tough on that.
Yeah, because it's pretty wet on the other side, you know, of that road, I mean, in in general, so we know that, anyway. Okay, thank you very much, those were my concerns, thank you very much.
Yeah, please come up.
Now you've done it. Does she have to pay for a new microphone?
Sandy Hammond, I'm butter across the street. Question. This is a storage facility, what's going to be stored stored there?
Um, wherever the tenant, tenant, yeah, the tenant wishes to store there, with the exception of boats will not be stored there.
Okay, when this first came up, I got the impression that it was going to be boats.
There was, there was a miscommunication between the town and the applicant originally that boat storage would be allowed if it was completely indoors and and not visible. After a determination by the town, they've determined that boat storage of any kind is not allowed there unless a variance is granted by the zoning board of adjustments. So there will not be any boat storage at this time is proposed.
Okay, so it will be just general whatever.
That's correct.
Okay, people can go in and do this themselves or?
Yep, no, they'll go and do it themselves.
They they'll have their own key and and go in and drop off, pick up, whatever.
Yes.
Okay. So as far as screening from the road, now that, of course, the leaves are off the trees, the deciduous trees, you can see lots of stuff, you know. If you're going to be doing more planting, do do some evergreens because it is quite visible still. And when the buildings are there, it's going to, you know, even be worse.
Yeah, I think all the, all the plantings they proposed down along that road line are evergreen.
But they're not in yet, of course.
No, no.
Yeah.
That'll go in tail end, you know, once they've constructed all of this for bay and the the mini ponds and all the management systems. Yeah, because I noticed you did have a couple of maples up up high as you kind of come in your driveway and.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Come on up.
Ken Riley, I'm right behind this situation. One thing with water, the drainage situation, when they first started getting ready to do this, somebody did a culvert across the classics road to kind of stop water from going down into where they were working. And they just put it in and it's trapping all the water right there. So what's happened is turned into a mosquito pit is what it's turned into.
This.
This is upstream on the Hodgson Road, I guess, upstream from where you're turning in to do your thing. It was probably the, I think it was the guy that cut the trees and stuff and he went in there and he was probably trying to slow down erosion or whatever while he was working.
Yeah, it was probably, it's probably just a timber cut, a timber cut.
But there's a, there's a culvert that runs right down the side of that Hodgson Road from my property, right along the edge of my.
It runs parallels on.
Yeah, all the way down that road and they just cut right into the road, made a big gully and the water goes in there and just stops right there, it doesn't drain out the other side.
Yeah, that'll all be taken care of.
I wouldn't have no issue with it, it was turning, yeah, last year I turned into a mosquito pit.
All right, yeah.
I don't care about the building, any of that stuff, lighting, you talked about a little bit briefly. Nothing will be shining towards my house, bright lighting.
Be all down. The the wall mounted building lights are in between the two buildings, so it's only just illuminating the area right between the two buildings. And we do have the one street light that will be put in, but it too is down shielded, so it's not like.
It doesn't look like it's it's.
In the middle of.
Yeah, scatter of light doesn't even go across Hodgson, so.
And something that can't really be anything done about now, I mean, I know how it works, you give a lumber guy a license to go in there and cut some trees and they just go a little bit crazy, I mean, they they rarely rape that land of trees.
Did they actually put a culvert in or just dig a ditch across?
Just dug a ditch across the road and it's it's a dead end.
Water bar.
Yeah, it's a dead end, though, so the water doesn't, you know, but it's it's backing it all up, because it's that many. Not a big deal, I'm sure, I'm I'm listening to what you're talking about, water management seems like.
But you want to control where the water goes.
Yeah, it seems like it's going to be under control, but right there, that's not controlling it, it's stopping and it's turning into a mosquito pit, I had no mosquitoes last summer, this summer I had a lot of mosquitoes because it's it's dead water. But anyway, I know that'll be taken care of, I'm not worried about that. Tree, I mean, how far, like that second building closest towards us, I'd say, the second building, how high up is that?
Well, the land keeps going for.
Yeah, it's kind of a, I mean, I think I got a pretty good graph for there, I mean, and again, I'd rather be, I'd rather be dealing with. Yeah, it's kind of a, I mean, I think I've got a pretty good graph for there, I mean, and again, I'd rather be, I'd rather be dealing with a storage unit than another. You're well liked, though. I bought the house, I was the only one there, I wore my underwear. It's all good, it was all good. Congratulations on your ability to capitalize on everybody's uh, compulsion to have too much stuff. But I mean, I mean, stuff will grow back, I mean, I know the tree, the tree guy kind of did ravage.
Well, we did, we cut it. But you, we didn't come anywhere near your back line.
Yeah, well, he came out, he snuck in around there.
A little bit, but.
Saw a few hardwoods and said, oh, I want that one. I know how.
Well, we got to grab what's.
They're trying to make some money on it.
Yeah. I think the buffer, if I'm not mistaken, was a hundred and fifty feet between the back line and that building. And that building.
Yeah.
Hundred and fifty feet.
Yeah.
From your line to that back, back.
And he knew where the line was, and I went for a big string out across there, he's like, oh, I see where the line is. But I'm good, I don't have anything else.
Thanks, Dan.
Thanks.
Okay, Bob, you hook up, I saw these guys' houses. Uh, any anybody else from public? No? Close the public portion. We have the comments from planning and. From, excuse me, highway, DOT permit, and you you've already obtained that. It's hot little hands. Conservation. Permanent marking of the wetlands.
I'm going to add that as a condition.
So how are we now handling the maintenance and inspection manual?
So that is going to, uh, we're going to request that that a note be added to the site plan. Referencing it and binding current and all future owners to it in that the. Maintenance uh, plan will be available at the planning department.
The site plan gets reg, gets recorded.
And then that's that site plan.
There is a, I noticed a note here on the Wetland Conservation Commission, and.
Yep.
The buffer line should be permanently marked with no cut markers. Are those still available from the conservation? They're available.
Perfect.
We got new ones.
Oh, wow.
I think they're beavers this time.
They're beavers, is that what you said?
They're emblems, they're they're wrong.
Is it like a beaver face? I just want to be clear on what we're putting.
No beavers nailed on trees.
Out of season.
Out of season, got it.
Those are just handy to have, because there's a change, the the markers.
Yeah.
Somebody uh, comes on a piece of property, what's this, you know? That that's how they find out about a buffer.
Okay, fair enough. Alright, so uh, active in substantial development. So within twenty-four months of date of approval, following items must be completed in order to constitute active and substantial development. We're building pursuant to RCA six seventy-four thirty-nine I relative to the five-year exemption. From regulation changes. So what are we going to identify? So we, they've already done some. Cutting out there, um, I don't know what's in place for erosion controls.
Nothing, yeah.
Oh, uh, so obviously erosion controls, um, clearing and grubbing. And uh. Establishment of uh. Drainage.
Yeah, so it's similar to what we just said with the with the boat storage. But the first thing needs to be done is all the drainage controls need to be put in. The road gets roughed in on the class six road, they get all the 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 grading done and the and the. Erosion control and drainage put in. That's the first thing that needs to be done, which is pretty normal.
I just have one question, just to clear it in my mind. Was it the understanding that if you go in and clear the lot, the time period? If you go and clear it.
Yes.
Before.
It was, there was, it was a time factor, you had to wait two years if you clear cut.
There used to be a, there used to be a time limit.
He says was, you says you, so it's it's history.
I don't know if it is history or not.
So I don't think that time limit's in place anymore.
Was in the. In the uh. Opening part of the orig- original zoning regs.
Zoning or? Site plan regs?
Zoning, uh, zoning and planning regs, because it was, it was basically a concept, they didn't want someone. To clear cut their property, then come in for subdivision.
Yeah.
They wanted them to come in for subdivision and then cut afterwards, so. And, you know, or one person was going to cut and sell the property, and somebody else is going to do something else, and so. Uh, the idea was to try not to get a lot of clear cut land.
And I think we hashed this out at the design review. I think the board had already hashed that out at the design review meeting. That was brought up and discussed.
Because you can't, when the case is under review, you can't go in and cut either. That's current and active.
Correct.
Oh, it's both, isn't it?
Well, apparently, I wasn't aware of the other one, it sounds like it's a two-year kind of hiatus or penalty almost.
That's what the original thought was, and this went back quite a ways.
Right, and that time, that time limit, you guys did away with that when you updated this set of regulations. That timeframe went away.
I believe that was installed during the early days of Juliet Everly.
So how confident are we that that's out? Before we step on our own toes?
It's not listed in there anymore, I'm confident.
Alright, so we got uh, number one pretty much addressed, uh, the second would be uh, constitute substantial substantial completion of the improvements. And I think again, issuance of a CFO.
Yeah, we want to get the job, we'll get the project done.
And then do they, they put on here, uh, reference the maintenance plan?
Yes, so we we did talk about that, we need to make sure that that's all kind of part of the motion and and conditions precedent and subsequent.
Yep, and then Jeff, you'll get back to me.
I will get that too.
The other stuff, and then once that's in place, then we'll coordinate something with the town engineer to set up a pre-construction meeting and all that.
Sounds good. Thank you, yep. That's assuming the board's going to vote to approve. Assuming, of course.
And assuming that spring comes.
So any uh, any more comments from board? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, I'll do the same thing I did last time, which is I don't need help. I'll make a motion uh, that we um. Approve case P twenty-two oh four. The self-storage facility Route twenty-eight Hodgson Road, and um, we have some changes to add.
So, under conditions precedent, I'm sorry, subs- yeah, precedent is going to be. The addition of the note on the site plan.
Right, okay, the site plan note, and.
Recording of the site plan. Well, don't, don't make him struggle, give him hints.
The the comment from the uh, Conservation Commission.
Oh, yeah. And uh, what was it about the uh, the drainage on the on the class six road?
That'll be taken care of.
Yeah, that'll be addressed through the construction. Upgrade to a class five. But if if that it does in fact, I mean, that's a good point, though, Tom, if that does in fact extend beyond their improvements of the class six road, whatever that. That needs to be corrected and fixed, so.
Yeah, it shouldn't be too much higher than that, because they, they, when you went in logging in there, he was just, it's about where. Where that turnaround is going to be, I think that'll get all picked up in that, in the construction.
Is there anything else I have forgotten?
No.
But we did specify in our discussion here what um, substantial completion is and. Conditions precedent, as far as, you know, getting the the drainage put in for.
Substantial, yeah. Yeah.
Will that all be in the record?
Yeah.
Yes, alright.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
So we got a motion?
I'll second it.
We have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? Well, alright.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, guys.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Let's wait for the sun.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. I was waiting for that, but it said public input on that case, I didn't know you were going to do that.
Yeah, good point. No public input, they're all leaving, so, so we have a motion to adjourn second, second, all those in favor?
What about all these other things? What are the calendar meeting dates?
This was a cleanup.
So we have a meeting tomorrow night, master plan?
Master plan.